Evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order the June 17, 2015 meeting of the Frederick County Planning Commission, and I hope you will join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. We have an agenda to approve.
Madam Chairman, move for adoption?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And we, as you will note, we have the May 6 minutes, and there's been a revision in those minutes for you, and each of us have a copy of that. So, in case, what, the point being that we were trying to clarify what proffer we were talking about in terms of the payment of transportation funds on our election site. Everybody with it? We will need to vote on that amendment.
Madam Chairman, move for adoption of the amended minutes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Time for committee reports. Mr. Trippett from the Conservation Eastman Authority.
Yes, we did have a meeting, and we previewed, excuse me, previewed a video of the CEA, informational video, which will be hopefully viewed by several people later in our meeting as your section C agenda.
Yes. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. And for comprehensive plans and programs, Mr. Oats is going to report for us.
Yes, ma'am. We met two weeks ago and basically discussed the Kernstown area plan that we're going to be reviewing tonight, and the board voted, or, excuse me, the committee voted to move it forward for public information and hearing.
Thank you. Anybody have anything that I've missed?
The city.
Hmm? The city, excuse me. Our left-hand folks, Steve Slaughter from the city, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't, I have a very short report. At our last meeting, we had very minor items. We did have two public hearings, both CUPs, one for the Sacred Heart Academy Gymnasium Expansion, the other for the Museum of the Shandau Valley, their future expansion plans. And then we also provided city council guidance on some safety improvements for Indian Alley in the proximity of the Discovery Museum.
Thank you.
That concludes my report.
All right. Thanks for being with us. And last but not least, Mr. Hess from the Board of Supervisors.
Madam Chairman, members of the commission, since the last Planning Commission meeting on May 20th, the Board of Supervisors has met twice with their agendas, including the following planning-related items. On May 27th, the Board held a public hearing for renewal of the agricultural and forestal districts. During the public hearing and board discussion, it was revealed that adjacent property owners were properly notified, but there were, that although there was no legal requirement to do so, the owners of the 46 small parcels that were proposed to be removed from the districts were not notified by letter of the proposed removal. The Board approved the renewal of the districts as advertised with the understanding that staff would move forward with legal notification to add the 46 parcels back into the districts, then review the parcels individually for those who wish to have them removed from the forestal districts. At that May 27th meeting, the Board also held a public hearing on the road improvement plan as previously presented to the Planning Commission, which you recommended adoption. Following the hearing, the Board unanimously approved adoption of the plans. Then on June 10th, the Board received a report from the Development Impact Model Oversight Committee regarding the model, including a recommendation for the annual updates of the critical input data, and a request to allow the staff to utilize the results of that update. Following questions and discussions, the Board unanimously approved the request, and I believe you have a copy of the changes to the input at your places this evening. And Planning Commission business on the 10th included holding a public hearing to rezone the two parcels in the Red Bud District on Route 7 East to Winchester, one of those parcels going from MH1 to B2, and the other going from B3 to B2 with proffers. A motion was made to approve the rezoning with a small change to the transportation proffer to allow the use of the funds for general transportation improvements in the Route 7 corridor rather than restricting those funds to pedestrian improvements, and that rezoning passed unanimously. There was another public hearing scheduled, but I'd like to report that the request by CB Ventures to rezone the parcel on Eler Road from B1 to B2 was withdrawn by the applicant the morning of the Board of Supervisors meeting. The Planning Commission had recommended that that rezoning not be approved. Other planning-related items included a discussion of the proposed revision to county ordinance regarding the farm winery text to include farm breweries and distilleries in rural area zoning districts in accordance with state code. The Board suggested some minor changes to the text and unanimously agreed to move it forward to public hearing with those changes. And lastly, they also held a discussion of the site plan revisions in additions to the zoning ordinance to include provisions for minor site plans and a list of sketches, and agreed to move it forward for public hearing. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. We are approaching the portion of our agenda called citizen comments, and I want to share something with you that may energize you to speak under citizen comments. Some of you may be here for the Blue Ridge Youth Soccer Association Conditional Use Permit, and those of you who are here, who were likely with us last time, and if you may recall that we had the public hearing last time. So, this particular meeting is for the Planning Commission to make a decision on the conditional use permit. This is a long way around of saying, if you would like to address this regarding this conditional use permit, it would be appropriate to do that during the citizen comment portion. You understand what I'm talking about? Okay? All righty? So, I will open the citizen comment portion, and if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak to us on any matter other than the ones that are on our agenda, please do so now. Come forward and give us your comments. One? My assistant here. Come forward, yeah. Just come on.
So, to clarify, for, there won't be a public, a citizen comment after the BRSO? Okay. Well, my name is Rebecca Arnett. I have been involved with the Blue Ridge Youth Soccer Association for the past 16 years, which is a pretty long time. My daughter Sydney, who is now 21, she started with the soccer association playing when she was in third grade, and progressed over the years. My other daughter Sadie, she is a junior now at James Wood, and she has played since she was five. The benefits of the soccer association have been enormous for us. They have learned perseverance, teamwork. I credit the United coaches for transforming my, or, my elementary daughter to becoming a graceful young lady as she entered middle school, just from the endurance and the strength training that she discovered during United Soccer, one that she wouldn't have done otherwise. She also got to meet a lot of other people throughout the county, the other schools that are in her grade level as well. So, that developed lots of lasting friendships throughout the county, which were very important. I just wanted to say that having this additional fields opportunity would be fantastic for our community, so that we can bring more children into the fold, into the soccer program, and to be able to expand. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
So, my name is Ray Lannum. I'm here on behalf of Blue Ridge Soccer. I'm actually the chair for the field committee. Is it okay to speak? Based on the May 6 Planning Commission meeting and the concerns voiced by the adjoining property owners, it was obvious to our group that we needed to go back and take a look at our property and discuss what needed to be changed in an effort to meet the concerns of the community members. We felt like we needed to have a community meeting. Mr. and Mrs. Sheehy, who own the Winchester Montessori School graciously hosted a meeting. This meeting was held on June 6th. Nathan Lang, who is the commissioner of Blue Ridge Youth Soccer Association, which is the recreation division, Jim Carden, who's the executive director of Winchester United, which is our travel division, and myself were present at the meeting. We wanted to meet with community members first to let them know who we were, what we were trying to do with the land out there, where we were coming from. Most importantly, we wanted to meet with them and hear their concerns about our use of that property. After, for, over the next two hours, we closely listened to all the concerns surrounding our request. It was clear to us, and it's also reiterated in the Planning Commission's notes from the May 6 meeting, that there were certain conditions that we needed to adjust or change our plan to. Collectively, our group spoke, and on June 8th, Nathan Lang and myself met with Candace Perkins to discuss alterations to our property. The common themes we heard, both from the notes from the June 6, excuse me, the May 6 meeting and our June 6 meeting that we held, were concerns about property, the property owner's security for their own property. We heard concerns about third-party uses, if we, as an organization, rented out the property. We heard concerns about screening, both visual and audible sound. We heard also concerns about trash, how we would handle trash, if there would be lighting, how that would be handled, and any environmental issues. Didn't mention there were about 25 people that participated in that meeting in addition to us. So, after, after meeting, discussing with our organization, we wanted to first talk about security. We currently lease fields, we currently use county fields, use county locations. Our current mode of operation would be our mode of operation at the new facility, complete supervision of our players and our visitors at all time during practice sessions and There would be, that would be policed by parents, by team managers, travel teams have team managers, they're very affiliated, and with coaches. Travel players also have code of ethics that they have to sign statewide through a state organization called Virginia Soccer Association. There would be no pre-game or post-game loitering. Coaches would make sure that people are off the field, and we would lock the gate when we're done with the facility. There will be a gate. Tobacco and alcohol prohibited, not going to happen on our facility. We would heavily post no trespassing signs at all the adjoining property owners' property. One of the things that came out of our meeting was a concern, there were some concerned parents, as well as the Sheehys from the Winchester Montessori School, they're concerned about their, their children at their location. There, we found that there could potentially be about an hour overlap from a post or care after-school program and our practice sessions. Because of this concern, we are going to be putting, should this go through, a chain-link fence at the two adjoining property lines from the Montessori School and to our property. In addition to that, there was some concern about misdirected traffic coming into their, their parking lot on game days. We would post signs for traffic, but we'd also provide them with a steel manual swing gate that they can operate at the entrance of their property. A similar gate would be at the entrance of our property. With respect to third-party users, we are a community organization, we're a nonprofit, we're small. This is a big task for us to take on a field project. We, there's no one that's going to want to protect this property more than us, and there's, we also need to find ways to, to pay for the improvements we'd make to the property. On that, on that line, we could potentially rent the property. Rentals would be for a field or for the entire field location. There would be an application process through us. We would have a strict code of conduct and rules for that location. We would require a dissecurity deposit to be provided to us in case someone can't follow the rules and regulations we have. We'll have a BRSO staff member on-site while rented the entire time. Okay? That site member will open the gate in the morning, close it in the evening, and make sure everyone's out. Talked about screening. Screening was a concern, visual and audible. There were recommendations made in the May 6 agenda. One of those was a 50-foot barrier with trees that would occur at property lines where there is woodland. We're double, we're adding 50% of that. We're going to provide a 75%, or 75-foot no-build zone, natural forest, and there's natural forest on the south and east property lines of that property.
Thank you.
75 feet, we wouldn't touch it. At the property of 130 George Drive, there are less trees. Planning Commission, or, Planning Commission staff recommended that there be one row of evergreens, eight foot on center, that are six foot high. We're going to do two rows of evergreens, 100% change there, eight feet high staggered. We would do that when we develop that portion, we see this being some phased development. At the property of 1148 West Parkins Mill Road, we're actually, this to us is the highest exposure. We've had several conversations with that owner, and we would be supplying three rows of trees as described in the meeting. So, we're talking about eight foot on center, staggered trees that would go in at six foot high, of an evergreen type. Trash. Players, parents, coaches today are responsible for that, and they will continue to be responsible for that. The coaches are strictly managed by organization. They'll be getting trash out, they pack it in, and they pack it out. But in addition to that, at the end of the game day, we will remove the trash, and we'll have designated receptacles that trash will go into. There was some concern about lighting. Lighting for us, I mentioned we're small, we want a field to play on first, that's our goal. Lighting would be somewhere down the road. When we got lighting, it would be, according to the ordinances, it would be down lighting, and it would be turned off by 10:00 PM every day. And the last concern was environmental uses. As we know, we're talking, we'd love to have turf fields, these are permeable fields. Other fields would be natural grass, they would be engineered for water. In addition to that, as everyone knows, we would have to go get a, pay to have a full site plan done, and that site plan, site plan would have to be compliant with DEQ engineering during and before approval, so. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? Yes.
My name is Alex Stanford, and I just recently graduated from James Wood High School. Next year, I'm going to be attending Lafayette College to play Division I soccer. I did not get this opportunity just by chance, it took many years of hard work and training. I started out my soccer career at the age of four, playing at the recreational level through BRSO, and in the fourth grade, I decided to play travel soccer for Winchester United. After playing travel for three years here, my parents and I realized that if I wanted to have a chance to play at the next level, I needed to make a change. In order to play in college, soccer must be a year-round commitment, not just a seasonal sport that we play when the weather is just perfect. We play in rain, snow, and cold temperatures. The important thing is to keep playing on a regular basis. As you know, practice makes perfect. I can't tell you how many times Winchester soccer practices would get canceled because of a slight rain the night before. It ended up becoming a running joke to many of us players. I ended up traveling to Loudon for the past six years, as I knew this would be my one chance to play at the Division I level. This was a huge commitment for my family and I, due to the distance and time required. I would have loved to have been able to stay here in Winchester, but I knew that just wasn't going to be the case. We have a lot of talented soccer players here in this area, but we just aren't offered the same opportunities, largely due to the lack of fields and facilities. Playing on a turf field is much different than playing on grass, and having a turf field here available to the players would allow us to be able to compete with players all around the country. And then one other piece to being successful at this sport is having qualified coaching. We have a handful of really great coaches here in the area, but if we want to entice more higher-level coaches to come coach in Winchester, we need facilities to draw them in. It is the old saying, if we build it, they will come, and I truly believe in this. So, I hope that you will seriously consider this proposal, as it would better our community and the children in our area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Luke Mason. I'm a resident in Frederick County, Cross Junction. I've been, I moved here 15 years ago from northwestern Pennsylvania. I'm a high school counselor, and I've been a part of BRSO and Winchester United, and officiating associations for the past, since I moved here. This is my daughter Lauren. But, and I, just to piggyback, obviously, on what the previous folks said, I, as much as I want to help develop competitive soccer players, I'm also very much, just like other coaches within our organization, want to raise responsible community citizens. And we're just as, we're all about what's going on off the field also. So, the things that, the relationships, and it's more than just about soccer, and it's about responsibility. And I think this opportunity for, it would help lend itself to the growth within our sport, but also for these, for these players to have the opportunities like Alex did, but here. So, we have, as a coach, I've, have never had an issue in the past 15 years when it comes to safety or issues, concerns that we've had from community residents, trash or discipline, anything like that. We take great pride in that. We meet regularly, a couple of coaches' meetings throughout the year. I have player and parent meetings about how we're going to be responsible for ourselves and our team, and so we take great pride in that, and that would continue.
Do you have anything you want to say?
I am Lauren Mason, and I am a fourth-grade student at Corals Elementary, and I will be going to Danny Morgan Middle School next year. Currently, I play with Winchester United U-10 girls team, and I always liked playing with the United. One, because like, there's so many great coaches and so many awesome players to finally meet and be teammates with now, but always be friends with from when you meet them to the end. And I think it would be really nice to have really great fields here, because whenever we travel to other places to play in the afterfields, and really nice fields, and there's closer, like, bathrooms, and they're really nice. I thought it would be really nice to have one of them here, and it would be, it would also be nice, because, and I also know that our team would take really good care of the fields, because whatever the community gives to us, we give back to the community, because our team really likes the idea of CCAP, for who gives food to the homeless. So, one day, before one of our soccer games, we made, my mom and me had made 40 cupcakes, and another teammate had brought in a lot of Gatorade, and we gave them away before our soccer game, asking for donations, and we got $104 worth of donations that we delivered to CCAP. And we're really grateful, and I know that our team would really take care of those fields, because we would love them, and we, we would always give back to the community. And if there is trash or anything on the field when we see it, we always want to make the fields better than when we first see them. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Well, that's a hard act to follow, I tell you. My name's Jennifer Gaylor. I've been a resident in Frederick County for eight and a half years. My daughter Samantha actually is a teammate of Lauren's, and she's been playing for five years. She started with BRSO, now she's with Winchester United. We have had the pleasure of having Luke Mason, Mason as our coach for the past two years, and I can tell you that everything he has said is absolutely true about how he wants to develop these girls into responsible citizens, and obviously, you heard that he's doing a pretty good job with his own daughter, too. We've had the pleasure of meeting great, great families in this community, and I would second what Lauren said, with the families, I have made lifelong friends with these parents and these other families. We are currently practicing, as you heard, playing on Parks and Rec fields. Everybody looks out for everybody else's kids on these fields. There's obviously some times when some of the parents are busy and they can't make all the practices. We make sure that kids are taken care of, and we know where everyone's kids are at all times, because once they're out there, they're kind of all of our kids. So, as community members, we obviously would enjoy a place that we could have, where we could keep an eye on everybody. When I asked Sam what she thought the best thing about having the fields would be, she said, "Mom, we need a home for these, for all of these families and all of these soccer players and these teams." So, it would be a great, great asset for this community. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Danielson. Obviously, I coach Winchester United, which is a part of BRSO. A little bit about myself, I'm originally from Fairfax. I went to Shenandoah University here. Afterwards, I got hired by the Winchester Police Department about 20 years ago, and I'm a captain with the Winchester Police Department. So, I have obviously very strong ties to this community now. Somebody asked me where my home is, maybe five, 10 years ago, I might have said Fairfax, but now, this is my home. I coached the U-9 boys team, my son plays on that team, and when we traveled to northern Virginia and see some of the facilities that are done privately by some of the clubs that own those, they are very nice facilities. It's not to say that Frederick County doesn't have nice parks that we can use, but as in talking with what everybody else said, we need our own home. We need somewhere that we can control, we can allow who we want on there, and as for the security of the facility, we will be in charge of that. And for the neighbors that worry about people who may wander off through the 75 yards of wooded area and trespass, you would do what you would do normally if someone was trespassing on your property. You would just call the sheriff's office, have them deal with the problem. It'd be no different than if one of the community members that live adjacent to this property went home and saw somebody on their property they didn't know now. But I can assure you, as a coach and as a parent of a child that plays on the team, that doesn't happen. The, the parents that bring their other children that are not on the team, they're monitored, they're watching, more times than not, they're playing with the other kids that are there within 15 or 20 yards away from the parents watching the practice. Again, not, I don't want to keep reiterating what you've heard, but this is something that's a, would be a great help for the community, number one. Number two, for our club, it gives us an identity, and we can now say, yes, we own this field, this is ours, it's something that, you know, we're going to take pride on. It's like when you buy a new home, when you get, get that feeling of ownership and pride, you need, this club needs that, it's long overdue for this club, so I hope you really give great thought in this and help us out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? All righty. We will close the citizen comment portion. And what we are moving into is the action item that deals with Blue Ridge Youth Soccer Association, and Mrs. Perkins will help us through this.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and members of the commission. Madam Chair, this is a request by the Blue Ridge Youth Soccer Association for a conditional use permit for a commercial outdoor recreation facility on two parcels of land that total a little over 57 acres, located on West Parkins Mill Road. Now, the conditional use permit would enable the construction and operation of an outdoor soccer complex on the subject properties. This is the This is the location map for the property. As you can see, you have Millwood Pike Route 50. Towards the side, the two properties are outlined in black. And this is the updated sketch plan provided by the applicant's engineer that shows a general depiction of what the site could look like. It shows the parking area, the entrance area, and the fields and the buffers. As you remember, may remember, the Planning Commission held a public hearing at your May 6th meeting. At that meeting, after a number of concerns were discussed, it was table for 45 days. And as the applicant did state, they had a community meeting on June 6th with the residents to discuss those concerns. So after that meeting, staff met with the applicant to discuss the revisions to the conditional use permit. Just to go back over what some of the changes were, the fencing along the adjacent school property and the gate, gating their own entrance onto West Parkins Mill, enhancements of the evergreen screening. In addition, there's also the woodland areas that have been expanded. We've added minimum parking standards for the fields, trash removal requirements, and allowance for a concession stand. So now just to go over the conditions as they stand, I would note that there is a minor revised staff report in front of you. The changes are highlighted through there. The main change is to condition number 10 and I'll go over that when I get to that one. So should the Planning Commission find the use appropriate, staff would recommend the following conditions. First, all review agency comments and requirements shall be complied with at all times. Number two, an engineered site plan will be submitted to and approved by the county prior to utilizing the facility. Three, minimum parking standards would be 30 spaces per field and access to the site will be gated when the fields are not in use. Number four, permanent bathroom facilities shall be provided on the site. Five, there's an allowance for a concession stand. Number six, all trash would be removed from the fields each day. Number seven, one free standing sign would be permitted. Eight, site lighting would conform to the ordinance. It would be full cutoff fixtures to control light spill into adjoining properties and all lighting would be turned off by 10. Number nine, all fields shall be a minimum of 75 feet from any adjoining property. Number 10, a double row of evergreen trees, six feet in height planted a maximum of eight feet on center, shall be provided along any property line that borders a residential dwelling where woodlands are not present. Now, the screening will be phased as the fields are constructed. Now, the change to that is that three rows of evergreens, six feet in height, eight feet on center, will be provided along the southern and western property lines for parcel 77-8-26, which is the residential property that's located on Parkins, West Parkins Mill. Wire fencing will be provided along the school site as well as the gate. Hours of operation, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The property will have one entrance onto West Parkins Mill. There will be no entrances on Route 50 except for emergency access that may be provided, approved by VDOT. And number 10, 14, excuse me, any change of use or expansion would require a new conditional use permit. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions and the applicant is also here should you have additional questions for him.
Any questions of Mrs. Perkins? And who is representing?
Mr. Lamb, who spoke earlier.
All right, do you have any questions?
No.
So, so our job is to have a vote on conditional use permit 0115 for the Blue Ridge Youth Soccer Association.
I've been a big proponent of youth athletics for many years, having daughters that were swimmers all their lives. And I think youth athletics for our younger, younger adults helps develop them into responsible adults, helps them with their education, moral values, their interaction with other adults and children. I think it's one of the best things we can provide for our youth in the area is a facility where they can interact with lots of different, diverse kids from all over the state, all over the country. And I think this is one of the best things that I think we could provide for them and the added benefit is it's being funded by private funds and it's not county taxpayer money, which is another benefit. So I think it'll supplement and complement the recreational department. It'll complement our schools and their athletic programs and I think this is one of the best things I've seen come for us for a long time, other than the county pool, but that's another issue. So certainly I favor this and partly support it.
Any other comments? Any others' comments? I did, I will tell you that we received one communication from someone who could not be here supporting this and we will make it part of the record. Mrs. Shawnee?
Move for approval of conditional use permit number 01-115 with the conditions as articulated.
Second.
We've had a motion? Any other comments? Mr. Unger?
Unger, yes.
Marston, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Oates, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Bowden, yes.
Trippett, yes.
Dunlap, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This will go to the Board of Supervisors on July the 8th to their meeting. So, thank you. We are moving into another piece of our work. If, if you would like to excuse yourselves, that's quite fine. Not to worry. Okay, our next item is an information discussion item dealing with the Kernstown area plan, which is a proposed amendment to the 2030 comp plan, Appendix 1 area plans. The Kernstown area plan looks to update, renew and expand the land use and transportation plans for the Kernstown area. The study area is generally located along Route 11, south of the city of Winchester and north of the town of Stevens City and west of 81. And it is in the Back Creek Magisterial District. Mr. Ruddy?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. This is an opportunity tonight for the Planning Commission to be brought up to speed and provide any additional comments and discussion they would like to on the Kernstown area plan as you described at the location. This plan, of course, utilizes a couple of existing land use plans, the Route 11 South Corridor Plan and the Western portion of the Southern Frederick Plan as the basis from which it was pulled together. Once that plan was created, we had worked to set up a public information and input meeting back in the end of May, which was held at the Mid-Atlantic Farm Credit Building down there in Kernstown. That was an important meeting, of course, because that was the opportunity, an opportunity for a good number of citizens to come out and discuss what was part of the plan and also provide any additional comments, input that they would like to at that time. So what you have in front of you is a draft plan that is, again, based upon two original plans and some work that was done previously with the most recent area plans and the citizen work. And it's been modified in several areas to address some of the citizen comments that we heard. And I'm going to go through some of those here as we, as we continue this evening to make sure that that's accurately reflected. Now, following the Planning Commission's agenda going out, of course, we've still been receiving comments and have been evaluating some additional changes to make. So I'll go through those shortly too. To point out that I think today, and we have it on your dais in front of you, was a letter from a property owner down there, again, expressing what they felt they would like to see on their property just north of the town of Stevens City. So with that, I'll move through just briefly the four maps that make up the Kernstown area plan. Of course, the first one is land use and that's highlighted on, on the screen to your left, which identifies the commercial and, excuse me, commercial and industrial land uses. It identifies where those rural areas are. It identifies the existing residential and some new areas of residential with the creekside neighborhood village idea, that concept. It also kind of recognizes some of those development sensitive areas that have historically been recognized, the Kernstown Battlefield and the Bartonsville area. And I'll touch on that a little bit more here in a moment. The second map, of course, deals with transportation and the existing transportation connections. The third one adds the trails components to the transportation portion of the Kernstown area plan. Of course, the fourth map deals with natural resources, historic resources, and then those community facilities. So again, consistent throughout recent amendments and area plans that we have here within the county. I mentioned that the drafts that you have as part of your agenda were modified, they were modified slightly to reflect some public input that we did receive. And your memo with tonight's agenda, I think, goes through some of those general comments and questions that were received and also identifies where adjustments were made to the text of the Kernstown area plan based on some of that input received. And very briefly, it provided some additional flexibility in the identified rural historic resource areas, which would encourage the adaptive reuse and sensitive development of those areas where appropriate. People were very supportive of the resources and the environment that was down there in the Bartonsville area, as they were, of course, up in the Kernstown Battlefield location. We did receive comments adjacent to the Bartonsville area in particular, especially to the north where folks wanted to see some additional commercial land use opportunities. And to the south where we'd identified the commercial recreation over the existing commercial recreation opportunity. And that was expanded, if you will, right up to the environmental features. So those were comments that were heard in addition to those dealing with transportation. In particular, in the Bartonsville area, folks wanted to ensure that no additional widening of Route 11 in the immediate vicinity of Bartonsville was anticipated. So of course, we need to recognize that the map was adjusted back to reflect the existing transportation network as currently proposed in the plan today. And to that end, Route 11 through the Bartonsville area was not identified for widening at this time. That begins with the commercial properties just north of Bartonsville, picks up the commercial properties and takes it up to basically Route 37 in the north to the city of Winchester. So those were comments that we had heard and to kind of, kind of recognize, if you will, down in the Bartonsville area, if I can point out with our sketch tool here, some of the additional areas, we wanted to recognize, again, property owners north of the Bartonsville location in this area wanted some additional commercial opportunities and therefore that was what was provided. As we move on from that area, it's important to recognize the additional discussions that have occurred since the Planning Commission agenda went out that I had made mention to. Back on the area in the southern part of the Bartonsville, the area that's hatched with the green and orange designation and recognizes commercial recreation, again, the property owner provided a letter today which recognizes that commercial recreation and would prefer to see that as a commercial opportunity. So the updated plan that you see on the screen to your left, which is not part of your agenda, it's reflective of today's and is up for discussion, again, in that area shows it with a commercial designation. You'll see that the letter that you have requested also would like to, I guess, the county ultimately to evaluate some additional residential in that area, but in keeping with the county's policy of no residential within the sewer and water service area and areas outside of the urban development area, the one thing that we wanted to just recognize was that commercial opportunity in that area as opposed to the commercial recreation. Felt that was, that was somewhat appropriate. The second point I have on that screen, again, deals with the development sensitive area and the rural, or, excuse me, we called it the development sensitive areas historically in the county to recognize those environmental, those cultural, historical locations and to provide some sort of local designation distinction to ensure that when things happen in those areas, they were done appropriately and reflective of protecting those resources. So with this plan, of course, we evaluated a rural historic resource area, calling it something different, but describing it allowing more flexibility. Staff has received input that deals with those areas, but more importantly recognizes that the county's rural areas are a valuable asset to the county. And so within those rural areas, there should be the opportunity to preserve and protect those historic locations, the rural character, if you will, of those locations. And so to, in recognition of that, if you will, again, while the current proposed plan recognizes DSA's, development sensitive areas, and suggested an alternative as a rural historic resource area, another alternative may be as shown on the plan here today or that we're discussing at the moment, is continuing to identify those as rural areas to ensure that those rural areas are promoted as rural areas of the county, not to allow development to occur, but not to forego the ability to do anything within the county's rural area. And then that would be up on the Kernstown Battlefield and of course, in the Bartonsville area. So I wanted to make sure that I discussed that because that's, again, reflective of additional input that we received here since the agenda went out. Again, modifying the commercial recreational land uses north of Stevens City and evaluating what truly we should call the Bartonsville and Kernstown areas, the DSA's, the rural historic resource area, or again, reinforcing the county's rural areas and letting things happen as they would do in the rural areas in those locations. Again, that's the input that we've received to this point. The first four maps that I went through, of course, describe the planners, the Comprehensive Plans and Programs Committee discussed at their last meeting. And that's where, where we are as we continue to work with the different entities to make sure everybody's aware of what's being proposed, make sure it's being evaluated by VDOT, by the sanitation authority, by all the players in place. And ultimately, as we make sure that it's prepared in a manner that's brought back to the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors with everything being as thoroughly addressed as it can be. So that's what we plan on doing. Important to point out as part of this, the mechanics of it, and we prepared an additional map here to, that we discussed at the Complaint Committee meeting, but it will go over here again. It was important to recognize the sewer and water service area changes and the urban development area changes. Again, the hatched area identifies the areas that were in Area 1, reduced back to the industrial land use designation. In Area 2, expanded out to Shady Elm Road to encompass the planned industrial land use. And again, in Area 3, just modified to be consistent with a property line. So that is a net increase, if you will, of acreage there of approximately, approximately, let's say 50 acres, an increase in the sewer and water service area. You'll also recognize that there's a reduction of 28 acres of the urban development area. And that 28 acres is in the Kernstown area, just south of the city of Winchester on the east side of Route 11 in an area that's identified with industrial and commercial land uses. So again, to reduce the urban development area there and place it wholly around the residential areas that are identified on the west side of 11 in that location. So that's the mechanics of the sewer and water service area and UDA change in that location. But I'll hold it right there. And really with, with that overview of where we are at this point with the work that's been done and looked at with the Comprehensive Plans and Programs Committee that incorporated many of the changes that had been discussed with citizens, wanted to make sure we understood where we were with that, but then also introduce those additional two suggestions for discussion and recognize that there is the ability to do that if we feel that's the way, the way to move forward. So staff's open to any input the Planning Commission may want to give. Otherwise, we'll continue to, to fine tune the draft plan and bring it back ultimately to the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors with, again, the full review of VDOT and all of the other parties that need to chime in and make sure that we're thoroughly addressing the things that need to be addressed. Madam Chairman will be happy to answer any questions that the commission would have.
I see one.
Yes, sir.
When we go from the historic designation to a rural designation, does that, part question, does that give the property owner the assumption then that he can develop that property in the future? And would that also allow that to be broken up into five acre lots at any time without any further county input? So, is it, is it truly a historical area that we would be losing or is it peripheral historical areas?
There are certainly historical areas, but they would be able to do what they, in the Bartonsville area, what they would be allowed to do by in the Bartonsville area, what they would be allowed to do by the rural area zoning designation. For instance, yes, they would be able to subdivide if their density and lot acreage would allow. They would also be able to come on in and work with the county perhaps on a conditional use permit if they felt a restaurant or redevelopment reuse for a restaurant facility would be appropriate. So they would be able to do those underlying RA, rural area, land uses. They would not be able to necessarily come on in and say, "I would like to turn that into a commercial or industrial location" because the land use would not support it. It would be definitely identified as a rural area. In addition, the third map, which identifies all of those historic resources, will clearly shows, of course, the resources, the Springdale House, the flour mill, the locations in Bartonsville. And probably important to recognize that the second area in the Kernstown Battlefield location that's recognized currently with a development-sensitive area but could revert back to a rural area designation is wholly protected. It's wholly protected by the Kernstown Battlefield Association through ownership of the property or future easements that they're obtaining on the adjacent properties. So relatively speaking, while the DSA's are a good concept that are useful for Frederick County, definitely our rural area designation has been reinforced in recent years, and that's something to be supported, too.
I understand that, but are we giving, you know, is the future being given away too much that the historical area would be lost by using a rural area designation? Because honestly, in rural area designations, property owners do pretty much what they want to do. So essentially, that's being given away on this when we take the historical designation out. So should we use a combination of rural area and historical area on some of this? The more significant historical areas, keep that designation and then maybe peripheral areas made rural areas instead of giving the whole thing away?
It's a very good point. Where is that balance? And we're trying always to seek what that balance is to allow the property owners to do certain things, but also to recognize our resources. And development-sensitive areas have been a good tool for the county in identifying those places and those locations. It's ensuring that when everybody uses the DSA, that they're reflecting what it is the county is looking to see, and that is promoting those historic resources, but also allowing things to happen in and around those resources creatively.
I mean, I certainly appreciate property owner rights and want to keep property owner rights as flexible as we can, but maybe part of this should have some historical designation and it just preserve the really significant parts of it.
We've certainly had that balance of discussion from property owners adjacent to those areas, wanting to have commercial opportunity, more opportunity, and then, you know, people within the Bartonsville area in particular valuing what they have there and valuing the future of that as the resources that are there today. So it's trying to find that balance. And I think that's what we're trying to do with. We felt like we were relatively close with the balance of land uses there because the current land use plans recognize those resources and encourage the property owners to create historic districts, as an example, in Bartonsville. And that encouragement is still there.
Well, I'm not so much worried about the current owners as the next owners or the owners after that, depending, you know, who it could be, anybody.
Yeah. So that's the balance we're trying to ensure that when we get it back in front of the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors, we've actually struck that right level.
Mr. Rhodes?
When I first came on the commission back in 2005, I think, I remember a few times where people would come in and say, "Well, this is an area that's white. We've got blue on one side, orange on another. You missed studying this area," or "It was overlooked, or now's the time to take a look at it." And I was glad that over the last 10 years in our land use plans, we put a color on those spots we wanted to save. And that color kind of acted like a little, you know, chip that said, "Stay off." We've looked at this. It's a DSA for either historic, environmental, for some reason. They could still do everything they wanted to in RA because they're basically zoned RA. However, it just gave people notice this was not an area to be used for residential or high-density residential or commercial industrial. And I think just leaving that white again, like we used to, is going to open that door again. Because for the last seven or eight years, we haven't had people pop up and say, "You missed this" because now there's a color on the map that dissuaded them from to try to develop that. And if it wasn't the DSA and there was a legitimate reason why maybe part of it should come out, like when we're looking at the northern part right now and bringing part of that into the commercial, then a study could be done to analyze that. But at least it put everybody on notice, there's something here, stop, we're just not going to dive into it and open it up for rezoning or expand the swathes because, you know, someone overlooked it and it wasn't studied. I think it's important to keep a color there on the map because that pictures where the thousands of words.
Really appreciate that input.
Any other comments, thoughts? I am trusting, Mike, that this is going back to Complan.
Yes, ma'am, because I think certainly in the past week, we've had some very substantial suggestions or requests from property owners, and I think there's hopefully a way to accommodate those. And in doing so, it will be different to what we had discussed at the last Complan Committee meeting. So absolutely, we'll work it back into the Complan Committee while at the same time making sure we continue to finish up whatever it is that we need to with the different agencies that are out there and the property owners that have provided that input.
Are we good? Okay.
Thank you very, very much.
We're good, Mike. Thank you. Our next item is something special. And Mr. Lawrence is going to take us through the Conservation Easement Authority video.
What I want to do real briefly is give you a quick update on the Conservation Easement Authority. It was created by the Board of Supervisors in 2005, so the group is about a decade old. And it had a couple of different tasks. And we like to say it was providing a means to assist county landowners in protecting and preserving their land. Quite honestly, it's another option for property owners in the rural areas community to consider. It's certainly not a requirement, but they're always looking for, "What can I do with my land?" And this is something else for them to consider if they wish to preserve their land. The CEA actually is acting as a clearinghouse for conservation easement information. When we were created 10 years ago, there was a thought that maybe we want to co-hold easements, maybe we want to actively fund purchase of development rights. And what we found is on the co-hold, we actually, we worked with the Potomac Conservancy and co-holed a 90-acre easement. And we felt, okay, that was good. We're not sure if we want to hold more of the easements. So we're turning more into an informational source. So we get contacted by property owners interested in conservation easements. We provide them as much information as we can. And then based on whether they want to pursue actually entering to an easement, we direct them to various agencies that actually hold easements. So that's sort of our, we're a clearinghouse, if you will. Ultimately, easements are up to the property owners. So we just provide information, let them decide what they want to do with their land. A little stat, as of April this year, there's over 8,000 acres in some form of conservation easement in the county, in some form of preservation, whether it's a dedicated conservation easement or it's a rural preservation tract that doesn't have development rights, or it's held by conservation organizations. We've got over 8,000 acres accounted for. I think I've got a map in here. Yeah, you can see, obviously, you've got National Forest down on the bottom, but you've got various parcels throughout the county in some form of preservation. Battlefield parks are some of the more common conservation easements that we've got in the county. But what we've done as an easement, as part of our efforts to make information available, is about a year and a half ago, the Conservation Easement Authority joined with the Potomac Conservancy to talk about, let's put together a video series of information. There's information available all over the place, but there was not any information that was really specific to Frederick County. So what we've done is we ventured out. We found that Potomac Conservancy, they've been doing easements for many years, so they have a lot of expertise on staff. What we found is on our staff, we had John Bishop, who does a lot of photography on the side, and he also does videos. So we were able to utilize his expertise to put some videos together. The partnership came up with probably initially eight, nine, 10 ideas for videos, different areas of information that we'd like to capture expertise, opinions, and be able to share. And where we ended up with is we probably narrowed it down to five videos. Two of them are online as we speak and available, and I'm going to show you one of them. And two of them, I guess, third and fourth, are going to be presented to the Conservation Easement Authority next week. And if they're okay with it, those will be made available. So the hope is by the end of this month, we'll have four videos available for the public to gain access to, and it's all on the Conservation Easements website. And I think Potomac Conservancy is also putting it on their website, so the idea is make it available. Before I start the video, Diane Kearns is here. Diane Kearns has been our chairman of the Conservation Easement Authority for...
About 10 years.
Two now, maybe eight-ish.
Eight years. Did you want to say anything? Or, okay. Okay. I want to put her on the spot.
Unless somebody has questions.
Okay. Well, with that said, let me, I'm going to play the video, and hopefully, it's going to work for us. Let's see. I said, "I think it's going to work."
Since its inception, Frederick County has been an ideal home for those looking to escape the hustle and bustle of more urban areas in exchange for a more rural lifestyle. Many come to start farms and farmettes, and still more to live in subdivisions near these rural and environmental attractions. People also come as tourists from all over to enjoy Frederick County's farm markets, historic features, natural environment, and other attractions. However, in recent decades, increased growth pressure has led to a much faster pace of development in Frederick County. Land, the head historically been family farms, has been leveled and developed, with residential subdivisions leading old and new Frederick County residents to wonder what might be done to preserve the county's rural heritage and environmental quality. In this video series, we are going to learn about one tool that can help people asking that question, a conservation easement. We're going to meet and talk with county residents who have put conservation easements on their property. We'll also find out what they learned, as well as what advice they may have for others. We'll also meet with professionals who help landowners through this process and agencies like the Potomac Conservancy who hold the easements in partnership with the landowners. Most importantly, we'll learn about what easements are and are not so that property owners can learn whether this is the right tool for them and other citizens can determine why this is a program that benefits them, even if they do not own land. So stay tuned as we learn together in future installments of conservation easements in Frederick County.
We call that the informational, the teaser, if you will. Oops, let's see. And that's sort of the idea was it's small enough, it'll grab your interest. And I will say that the other videos that we have, the landowner testimonials, the agency perspectives, the professional, they're probably, well, they're probably 10, 15 minutes. But the idea is we wanted people to get interested, and if the first video interests you, then on your own time, you can watch the rest of them. So with that said, the information, if you have cable, Comcast Cable 16, these videos, or the first video at least, is running through the TV programming for Cable 16. But we also have those informational videos available at the CEA's webpage, which you've got up on the screen there. And it's important to point out that this is a CEA partnership with Potomac Conservancy. The beauty of the partnership is they have a lot of expertise that we don't have, but we provide staff support just as county service to the residents. And fortunately, with Mr. Bishop on staff, we're able to do the productions in-house. And with that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I definitely would encourage you, I'm not going to show you more videos this evening, but I would encourage you, as time allows, to visit the webpage and just watch the videos. And we certainly welcome feedback. And hopefully, another, we'll have the fourth video, we'll have four videos online by the end of the month or probably by mid-July, and that'll be a good resource for people to tap into to just figure out if this is something that works for them.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Congratulations. I think we're at the end of our agenda. I do, we do have a need to cancel the July 1st meeting, so.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Blue for German.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much.